Some great presentations that are going to be made from our young men and our young ladies. So, starting us off, Springfield Renaissance is in the house accompanied by Jenny Manfredi, Assistant Principal. And we have, correct me if I'm wrong on the names, we have Damaya Mangru, Brianna Henry, Mahona?
Mahara.
Mahara, oh, it's an A, okay. There's an O here, Mahara Shamira.
Yeah.
I got that, right? It was an O here. Come on down. I apologize, ladies, it was an O instead of an A, but great to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, hi, my name is Brianna Henry.
My name is Mahara Shamira.
I'm Damaya Mangru. And we're from Springfield Renaissance School, as you said. We started a group last year called Sisters United College Bound Girls. And we're just gonna talk a little bit about like how we started it, what we've accomplished, and what we hope to achieve in the future.
So, the group was started last, I think around last January. I was in the guidance office with Brianna, and we were talking to our guidance counselor. And we were talking about like the privileges of 100 miles to college. And I was like, I wish there was something like that for girls. And she was like, well, why can't there be? And I was like, what do you mean? And she was like, well, you can start it. Like, if you write a proposal, I can send it to the principal, and we can start your own group. And I was like, okay. So, I went home, typed over a proposal, and it happened. The next week, we began like recruiting girls and looking for girls interested, and our group was established that following March.
So, on a weekly basis, we have Thursday meetings during lunch, and they consist of having a workshop that's based off of like what's going on in that month, or something we want to talk to the girls about related to like college, the college process, or building confidence. For example, like a fashion workshop where people could like show their identity through what they wear and what they're interested in. And so, it's just a good way to get the girls like familiar with each other and confident to speak out and present on their own. And then, yeah, and then we can talk.
So, last year, at the end of the year, we talked about having a conference that involved at least 10 girls from each of those high schools in Springfield. And so, we were working to get that done. So, January 26th, 2018, we had our first annual conference, and it involved about 130 girls from all of the different Springfield high schools. And we, the girls that are in our group at our school facilitated workshops, and it was just a great experience. Actually, we created a partnership with STIC. We had to add STIC. And, yeah, and it was just a really good time for girls to put their differences aside and understand that we all are Sisters United, basically.
So, pumped. So, one of our goals for the conference was to spread our group to other high schools. And so far, we have SCOTA, who has started their own, well, Springfield Conservatory of the Arts, they started their own Sisters United group, and Putnam is also interested in starting their group. So, we're making progress there. And for our girls in our own school, we want to achieve like having more college visits. So, last year, we went to Smith, and we went to see Rachel Maddow speak, and we had a tour of the college, and they got to talk to us about how it works. And so, this year, we're hoping to go to a school in like Connecticut to get like a different feel of environment, so that the girls are like exposed to different colleges before they go through the college process themselves.
And this group, I feel like, aside from us being leaders, I feel like our school really supported us in helping start it. And if you guys want to come see the culture at our school, you can come to our site seminar April 20th, April 5th and 6th. So, thank you.
Nice job, ladies.
Yeah, nice job.
Thank you. The High School of Science and Technology, the Cyber Catcher.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Sure.
I had the privilege of attending a brief portion of their conference that they had. And I stopped in for about 15 minutes, and I was totally blown away. You would have been very, very pleased to see the unity and this, the beautiful, as you would say, mosaic of young ladies working together, and it was amazing. So, I am so proud of what they're doing, and I'm so happy that they're expanding it into other schools as well.
Thank you, Ms. Nail. I'm sure I miss, thank you. Worthily comments, very worthy comments. High School of Science and Technology is in the house. I know Timmy Malone, the Assistant Principal, is here. Shoshana Williams, if I pronounced wrong, Yan Zambrana, come down, come on down. If I pronounced your name wrong, please correct me.
It's Shoshana.
Shahan.
Yes.
Okay.
Could Coach Davis come up with me?
Certainly. Come on, Coach.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sernol and Springfield School Committee members. My name is Shoshana Williams, and I'm a junior in the Fresh Start Program at SciTech Technology. I transferred, I'm sorry.
You're doing fine.
I transferred to SciTech from Atlanta, Georgia after losing my mother a few months before. After losing my mom, I started having real bad anxiety, and I didn't want to come to school. I remember walking into the building with the shakes. And then, I met Coach Davis, and I felt a whole different energy. I knew I was, I was in good hands. The program has verbal groups that help students with personal issues outside of school. Coach has helped me in so many ways in a short period of time, and I cannot thank him enough. My third day at SciTech, I was in the newspaper working with Clydesdale Horses that the Fresh Start Program bought to this high school for special needs kids in the LINKS program. Coach Davis also purchased 30 Shriners horse bears from the Shriner Hospital, and the first program delivered the bears to the Ronald McDonald House in Springfield. We gave the bears to the children staying at the Ronald McDonald House. The most exciting thing that we do in the Fresh Start Program is work with special need kids with disabilities. We help with their academics and do projects with them. It's like we're giving back. The last thing that I want to say, during Christmas break, Coach Davis delivered presents to my house on a carriage. Sorry.
It's okay, Ms. Williams, you're doing fine. Very heartfelt. You're doing fine, dear. You take your time.
I'm sorry.
You're doing fine.
In front of my apartment, we were so excited.
Thank you, Attorney Phelps. Thank you.
Can't see now.
Getting fogged up.
Where was I? We were so excited and grateful. I didn't think we'd have Christmas, but Coach made sure we had gifts and a Christmas tree. My brother and I will never forget that day. Thank you, Coach, for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you, Coach Davis. And condolences on your mom, Ms. Williams. Thank you so much. That was very heartfelt. We now have Liberty Prep Academy is in the house. I know that Assistant Principal Jennifer Jen McQuade is here. One of my park commissioners too is Rhonda, Principal Rhonda Jacobs. Rhonda, where's Rhonda here?
Yes.
There's, oh, back, I didn't see you back there. Okay. And we have Melissa Furman, Carlos Lopez, Kamari Gladden, come on down.
Ladies first.
Ladies first. All right.
Ladies first, you know?
It's okay.
As long as you say it's okay, that's all right.
Yeah, it's fine.
I guess I'll go first.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't have time to memorize it, but...
It's okay. What's your name, loud and proud?
My name is Kamari Gladden.
Okay, Mr. Gladden.
From high school completion. All right, so, I am currently a student at the high school completion program. I also go to Job Corps. I started out at Putnam, but ended up transferred out because my GPA was too low, so they had me transferred to high school completion. So, the program is basically like getting the credits that you need to graduate easier and faster. You just take the classes that you need and do what you gotta do. Depending on what class you have, depending on what class you have to take, either you have to take the class online or as a regular class. The trade that I took was bricklaying. I chose brick because I liked it. I wanted to build houses or whatever out of brick. I learned, I learned as I go. So, as much as you actually put into it, it will, as much as you put into it, it will be your result. So, I try every day because this will be my career, because it's something I like to do. Also, after you complete your trade and get your certificate, you can, you can go to advanced training, but you can't get any write-ups, and you have to be at school every day. I will graduate this year, so I'll be going straight to my trade.
Nice job. Thank you.
How y'all doing?
Good.
My name is Carlos Lopez. I am working towards earning a diploma by going to high school completion program. I am also going to Job Corps, starting my, well, I started my high school career at Chikibee Comp, but I had, I moved and went to Putnam in my sophomore year. Due to personal family issues, I didn't end up doing well at Putnam. Thankfully, the option to earn my diploma at high school completion and learn a trade at Job Corps was given to me. I decided to speak here because I want other people to understand that there are options to completing goals. My goal of earning a high school diploma, getting a certificate, certification in bricklaying, and also going for advanced training will happen soon. Two years ago, I didn't even know about Job Corps or high school completion, and now I am recommending it to other people. Because of this opportunity, I have recovered my academic classes and will graduate in June with my high school diploma with my original class. I will also continue at Job Corps until I receive my certification and going for advanced training.
Nice job. Thank you. Ms. Furman?
Good evening. My name is Melissa Furman, and I attend Liberty Preparatory Academy, a substance abuse recovery high school that is part of the Springfield alternative system. I've been going to Liberty Prep consecutively for about two years. I've learned a lot about persistence, perseverance, and maturity. The teachers and staff have been very supportive throughout my many trials and tribulations, as well as aiding me in my goal to graduate and attend colleges this fall a year ahead of time. Aside from doing the best I can in school, I've also been, been spending most of my free time working at the Jewish Life Care Center in Long Meadow, caring for my elders, working with them, getting to know them, and also gaining insight into the world of healthcare, which is not only a gratifying experience, but will help me pursue my goal in becoming a physician's assistant. All of this has not come easy, especially considering I happen to be a child in the system. Most of what I have done and will continue to do has required a great amount of patience and consistency. I cannot stress enough how much of a tremendous amount of help this program has been, and I am grateful to no end for the Liberty Prep staff, Ms. LaSorsa, Ms. McQuade, and my wonderful counselor, Paul, for their tireless devotion to helping me succeed. And lastly, when my goals are finally met, I can look back on all I've been through, the long hours, the sleepless nights, the stressful interactions, and really feel like I've made it.
Nice job. Thank you. Putnam Vocational Technical Academy is in the house. They're accompanied by Mr. Billy Scott, who was a hell of a defensive back and baseball player and old teammate. And I understand that David Bass and Ashley Laura are here. Come on down. You are looking quite GQ and dapper tonight, Mr. Bass.
Thank you, thank you very much. My partner Ashley isn't here tonight, but I, as you heard, I'm David Bass Jr. I'm a senior at Putnam, and I've come to represent my school and just to share a little bit of my story. So, four years ago, I entered into my freshman year at Putnam, you know, a zealous, socially and politically conscious, frustrated kid. You know, I always had a desire to join and be a part of something that's really making a difference in my community. And I, I don't know what the environment is like now at Van Sickle. I hear it's called RISE, but I know, I hope it's better. You know, I know that when I was there, there weren't any groups or clubs or any activities to join or to get involved in through which I could express my ideas and concerns and actually put them into action. So, when I stepped into Putnam, I was just completely amazed by how many activities, how many groups, how many initiatives we had. I mean, there were leaders who were active, student council was active, we had so many different help programs, so many different organizations that were active in our school. So, that's one of the things that really affected me and impacted me in a very strong way. And I remember, sorry.
You're doing fine, Ms. Bass.
So many different groups, I'll talk about some of them. We have Project Purple, which is our anti-substance abuse initiative, started by former NBA star Chris Heron to deter teens from going down that same path of drug addiction that he did. And there's always, there's always been such a strong, strong attitude, such a strong spirit of a community at Putnam, and we keep it going, whether it's through our gaming and snowboarding clubs, our GSA, Skills USA, which is for the training of young people for the workforce. And I have to just say, I'm looking back at it now, you know, I've grown in faith and leadership and in all my skills, and I'm truly thankful for all the adults like Mr. Scott, who saw a young kid with, with passion and potential, and did everything in their power to take them and train them and encourage them and empower them, and to make sure that they could have access to all the opportunities, all the leadership opportunities that they could possibly get their hands on. So, it's a special thank you out to you. I'd like to applaud you guys for that right now. Right now, I stand before you, my fourth and final year of high school, and I just bask, I just delight in the honor and the privilege to, to pass it on, to pass the torch, to train, equip, and inspire the next wave of leaders, and to just share that with you. And I, I give God the glory for it all, and thank you for letting me share, and thank you for having me.
Nice job, Mr. Bass. Duggan Academy is in the house. I know that Principal Mike Calvinese is here, and I think Assistant Principal April Huckabee is also here. And Billy Washington is in the house. Come on down. Good to see you again, Billy.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Billy Washington, and I'm a senior at Duggan Academy. I've attended Duggan ever since the first day this became a high school. When I first found out, I didn't get into Putnam, I was discouraged. Contemplating everything I did during middle school years is not good enough. My parents made it their duty to show me the light at the end of this tunnel. I remember them telling me, Duggan would be much smaller, with less drama, being the first high school graduating class. I must admit, they both had good points, but none as appealing to me as being a Putnam Beaver in that moment. With that on my mind, the majority of my freshman year, I lashed out, making terrible decisions that didn't benefit my academics nor my life. Fortunately, that passed, and I began to see the light. At first, I couldn't stand hearing how I was to lead by example, and since we were the oldest, we needed to act like it. My feedback was always, well, we didn't have to be, or how other freshmen didn't need to be seen is because they actually had them. It wasn't until I joined 100 Miles to College that I saw the value of leadership. Then, everything began to fall into place. I started spreading what I learned, not only to people in my grade, but younger students of Duggan as well. Having the knowledge and power to speak became one of the reasons I loved Duggan. My junior year, I had the blessing to attend the Historically Black Colleges and Universities Tour, visiting colleges, my bad, visiting colleges in Virginia, Tennessee, Alabama, Atlanta, North Carolina, and Washington DC. Going on this journey showed me that Duggan students can hang with any of the other Springfield public school students that attended. Just about every day I was going on my tour, I received questions about Duggan from other students. Some even stating what they heard in the past. I would simply respond with the same exact answer. High school is what you make it. Telling them how I didn't like it at first, but had loved, had grown to love it, seeing how I was able to bring 10 recommendations from teachers added to why Duggan's administration are a part of my family. All the teachers want to see all students and staff excel and not settle for any limitations. They believed in us when we had no belief in ourselves.
Nice job, Mr. Washington. You look sharp tonight, too. Springfield Conservative of the Arts is in the house. Principal Ryan Kelly, who was a hell of a soccer player in his days here, he's got quite the contingent. Allison Murphy, D'Artagnan Acosta, Katia Vasquez, Israel Pabon, Jay Caplis, Diamond Camacho, come on down.
So, we have a few missing.
Okay.
Cat and D'Artagnan are not here.
Okay.
Ally's over there telling me not to say that Ally's over there. These three are gonna talk about the colleges they plan on attending, majors they plan on, studies, maybe some college classes that they took this year.
Great.
My name is Jacob Ellis. I'm here today to talk about some of my personal achievements and my college success. Now, I am planning on going to the university, I've been planning on going to the Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts and getting a degree in secondary education.
Good. Thank you.
I hope that I can come back to an urban setting and make some sort of impact. That is my big dream. And one of the major reasons why I think this is because I've spent the last two and a half years at two separate internships that I got in part because of the Springfield Conservatory. One of them is at the Springfield Museums, where I've been able to learn about history and learn about teaching, and just being able to spend time with children and families has given me so much. I'm also the cat in the hat, so if any of you see the cat in the hat, that's me.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I know. Yeah, I said, Kate's Palace, that's right, I remember, yeah.
I also have an internship where I'm at the New England Public Radio. So, thanks to that, I was able to get a commentary played nationwide, and it is about my struggles as a transgender individual, and I'm so proud of it. It has been played, I think, twice now, so it is something, yes, thank you. And through NPR, I discovered how much I love writing, and I love telling my story. So, I want to give children the voices to tell their stories. So, thank you so much for your time.
Nice job.
And I hope you can see me as a soon-to-be teacher one day.
Yeah. Congrats.
I'm Israel Pabon. I'm a senior at Springfield Conservatory. I applied to Westfield State, LaSalle University, Mass Art, Mount Ida, and Framingham State, and I got all in on a Presidential Mayor Scholarship and for the fashion design, and through the fashion design program, so hopefully I'll be in there. But I haven't made a decision on which college I'm about to go to, but I'm hoping to make one soon. I'm a dual enrollment student. This is my third class. I was in a psychology and a human growth development during the summer and last semester, and right now, I'm in a digital photography course.
Nice job, Ms. Bass.
Hi, my name's Diamond Camacho. I'm a dual enrollment student. I've been, I did dual enrollment since the fall till now. I did psych, Spanish for healthcare, and currently, I'm doing sociology. I applied at many colleges, but the one that I really wanted to go to was Elms College. I didn't get accepted, but I did get accepted to the AIC, to AIC nursing program and to the honors.
That's a tough program to get into. Pretty good.
That's it.
Well, that's pretty good. That's pretty good. Nice shot. Okay, we have Springfield Honors Academy at the High School of Commerce, my alma mater. Jafari Brown, Jonathan Jones, they're accompanied by Ms. Hershey, the English teacher. Come on down. Guys are looking sharp, too.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity for letting us to present to you today. My name is Jafari Brown, and I am a freshman at Springfield Honors Academy and the current student government vice president.
Good afternoon. I am Jonathan Jones, and I'm also a student of Springfield Honors Academy.
When we were preparing to speak, we realized we can go on and on about our experiences at Shaw, about the cohort groups, about the friends we made, about how hard the homework was, and how hard the tests are too, and how hard adjusting to high school has been so far. But we're gonna tell you what actually shows our improvement and our growth, and that's the numbers. So, 20, the number of Shaw students who scored higher on the PSAT than 52% of the test takers in the nation.
Seven, the number of works of literature spanning from the beginning of human history up to today that SHA students have studied so far this school year.
11, the number of ROTC uniforms we wear with pride alongside our Commerce High School peers.
26, the number of local elementary schools' classes that have, that have had SHA students as guest readers through SHA Reads.
65, the number of flashlights that we sent to Puerto Rico after the hurricane as part of our World Scholar Course.
Three, the number of SHA voices that sing with the Commerce High School of Mad Girls.
Six, the number of musical instruments that come alive in the hands of Shaw students and Commerce High School jazz band.
122, the percentage of projected growth SHA achieved in math map scores in the winter of 2018.
Woo!
17, the number of moments of silence we observed in one day to bring attention to the problem of youth gun violence.
Thank you.
Eight, the number of SHA students designated as anchors to support their peers through life struggles.
Six, the number of students that have transferred to Shaw since September.
100, the current percentage rate of attendance for SHA teachers.
100%.
15, the number of genetic disorder students have researched and presented information on to the peers in biology.
Six, the average number of nights per week SHA students can expect to have homework.
22, the number of Shaw students who have attended Commerce High School homecoming.
Four, the number of student organizations started by the SHA students, culinary, math adventure, and drama.
Oh, and ping pong.
34, the number of Shaw students who have finished the fall term with an academic GPA of 3.0 or better.
Very good.
Seven, the number of SHA students who are also athletes playing for Commerce High School for district-wide teams.
One, the number of student ambassadors Shaw has in statewide Project 351 program.
Five, the number of student government association officers serving as the collective voice for the SHA student body.
508, the percentage of growth, projected growth, oh, projected growth Shaw achieved in English math scores in the winter of 2018.
Mmm. Pretty good.
96, the current percentage rate for attendance of SHA students.
Nice.
Three, the number of parents of Shaw students that serve as committee chairs on the Parent Guardian Advisory Council.
Seven, the number of SHA students who applied and were selected for the Urban League Big Three STEM Pipeline Initiative. Only 20 students were selected citywide, and seven are SHA, including myself.
All right.
96, the percentage of parents of Shaw students who have responded in a fall survey what they and their students feel supported by the Shaw.
62, the total number of freshman students in SHA.
62, hey, that's also the total number of freshman students who are proud to be part of SHA. Okay. So, our hope is that one or two of these numbers has surprised you so far and impressed you. To be honest, we did, we did not know how this would expect...
You're doing fine.
We did not know what to expect when we walked through these doors. But now that I've been a part of Shaw this year, for me as a person, I can see how I have personally developed and how it's gonna improve, and how I'm gonna improve, and how I can further improve the community around me.
I agree, and I've also enjoyed my high school experience at Shaw, and as you can see, I got an instrument, a little bit of talent. I'm not saying I'm the best, but it's very entertaining, and I also do photography, so it's a good...
What's the instrument? What instrument's that?
The trumpet.
Trumpet, very good. Okay, Miles Davis, very good. Very good. Well, you make us a proud alumni, class of 1981, of the Red Raiders of the High School of Commerce, so from the halls of Commerce to the halls of City Hall, you can do the same, if not... same, if not better. So we're proud of you. Okay, last but not least, Mr. Central is in the house, Principal Tad Tokars, who was a good, very good soccer player himself. And we have Hannah Pelletier, Albert Sweeney, and we also have some of the members of the award-winning Central Band. Come on down.
Hey, good evening. My name is Hannah Pelletier. Unfortunately, my partner, Albert, couldn't be with me today, but I will be telling you a little bit about my story. I'm a senior at Central High School, which all the seniors in the house, it's stressful, it's a stressful year, not unsure where to go, unsure what to do, but Central makes that very, very easy to, you're freaking out, there's someone you can go to, there's everybody that could help you with anything you possibly need, and it's so readily available that it's kind of scary. It's no longer overwhelming. I know where I'm going to go and I know what I'm going to do. I'm attending UMass Amherst in the fall for music education. I have my incredible band director to thank for that, Mr. Dandaran. He has been there since the beginning, and band has been the one thing that has just been with me throughout the entire, my entire high school career. Coming in as a freshman, I was very quiet. I was, I didn't want to partake in a lot of things. I was, I was overwhelmed, to say the least. Band made that super, super easy on me because we have band camp where we come in the week before school, and I immediately have 80 friends right then and there. It is, Central immediately becomes a home. I know the hallways before I've even started a class. You start classes there, the teachers are incredible, they're amazing and supportive of everything you want to do. There's a class for anything you want to do, which makes senior year so amazing because your schedule opens up and you can take all of these crazy classes. So I have friends that are taking the AP Chem class, and they're, they're going to go into chemistry, but I have friends that are taking incredible math classes because they're going to be engineers, there's anything you want to do. And that's one of the things that is so ingrained in the culture of Central that I find, is the classes and the clubs, there is something for you no matter what you do. And Dr. Tokars really pushes out on the students is to join something, to become part of the community. So if you're staying after school, there's something for you no matter what you have inside. And if you've never tried anything, he encourages to just try something. Sports are such a big part, and there's so many sports you can choose from. There is always something for students, and that has been the one thing that I find has helped students throughout their career.
Is that Albert?
Yeah, that's Albert. That's Albert.
You're, you're in the house, Albert, huh? Okay, okay. What a grand entrance there. Oh, wait a minute, she didn't finish up yet.
Okay.
You're going to tell, you went to, I understand you went to a parade, too, am I correct?
Yes.
Winner, Macy's.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, is from those opportunities, I've had, I've had the chance for two years in a row to be part of what's called the Macy's Great American Marching Band. So what that is, is during the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, Macy's themselves have an all-star band, which is comprised of about 250 of the best high school musicians from across America. So I spend a week out in New York with them, where you practice the whole time, but you also get amazing opportunities to go out and see Broadway shows, you go out into the city, you do so many opportunities while you're there, and at the end, you get to march in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, which is amazing. And I also get to meet, I have made so many friends from that, that are from every part of America that you can think of, playing all different kinds of instruments and coming together to make that one sound. And that would not have been possible if it weren't for the support that I felt, not only from my school, but from Springfield in general. And Mayor Sarno actually wrote me a very nice letter.
You weren't even going to mention that you went to that parade. You're so humble and genuine, that's why I had to do it. We're very proud of you.
So, yeah, I have not only my school, but the city of Springfield to thank for that.
Nice job, Mr. Central. Albert, better late than never.
So, my name is Albert. I'm a senior at Central High School, and I don't know what Hannah's talked about so far, but I had like, I was typing like a whole thing to say, but, so basically, Central is like a second home to me. Like, I'm always there, you know, there's so many things going on at Central. We have like so many activities. We have, I'm part of 100 Meals College. It's a youth organization for men of color, you know, to get a chance to get that, to get the chance to, you know, have mentoring so that they'll be able to go to college, you know, and get that type of like feel, like with, not with your parents, but people in the schools helping you so that you could be able to do that. Also, we have Key Club at our school, which is a national community service organization where it gives teens in high school the chance to go out and, you know, do community service. What else is there at our school? We have so many things going on. There's like, oh, there's National Honor Society and National Math Honor Society, where if you have a certain, a minimum GPA or grade in that class, or whatever your report card grade is, that you could be part of this, you know, for having good grades in school. Also, there's different clubs just for students, just to keep them active, you know, to keep us, you know, out of the streets, you know, keeping us doing positive things. Like, I know there's a gaming club, they have Gay Street Alliance at our school, Yearbook, you know, that's another club. But yeah, I just feel like Central is just a place where it gives you the opportunity to be whoever you want and like have fun and enjoy yourself without ever having to worry about people judging you or feeling like, like whatever your interest is, is not important because Central makes it important for you. So, that's what I feel about Central. Me personally, I have a sister who graduated from Central, you know, so I've always looked up to her, and she's always done things and like, dang, I want to do that, too, because Central is such a good place to be at. I know like my sister got to travel all the way to Vegas with her basketball team, like just like little things like that. When I was a freshman, I got to go to DC with the marching band. And just being at Central, like I said, it's just, the overall atmosphere of it is just so great, and it makes me proud that I got to be here today and talk to you guys about my school, and to show you guys that like Central is a great place to be and that it offers so many things for the students and it keeps us active. Like I said, it keeps us active and in the, not also in school, but in the community. Because like, yeah, we may learn, but I know there's some kids who don't leave there until about nine o'clock at night, and the, the, the school, I don't know, the school department does this, but I like how they like feed us after school, you know, there's kids who are there like so, like so late at night, and they just like the, the dinner program. Like, they feed us and things like that. So like, I love how they look out for all the students and all the, get acknowledged, like whatever, if it's like little marching band, ROTC, our names are always on that little banner thing we have outside of our school, just to like let everybody know what's going on at Central and what we're doing. So I want to say thank you on behalf of Central and the faculty for everything you guys have done for us.
Hey, Albert, we're glad you showed up. Here, Hannah, good job. We have the award, we have the award-winning, yes?
Awards?
No, we do. I don't have that on my list, I apologize.
Oh, okay.
Oh, well, let, Central Band, we'll hold on one second, we don't, Principal Jacobs, Public Day High School, come on down.
Absolutely.
I extend my apologies to you, was not listed on the list here. Please, loud and proud, tell me your names.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Torres. I'm currently with my ELA teacher, Ms. Melani Figueroa. She is the student advisor of the Student Council of, currently at Springfield Public Day High School. And I'm currently with one more of my fellow class members, Ms. Malina Conro. Before I begin, I would just like to give a round of applause to all who had the courage to come up here and just speak their mind and express how they really feel. Good job for all of you guys. So hello, my name is Jonathan Torres, as you may know, and I am a part of the Student Council at Springfield Public Day High School. As you may or may not know, I am a representative of the Student Council. We are the Cyclones. Here at Springfield Public Day High School, and this year, the Student Council has been taking an active role in our school. We have been helping our staff to interview counselors and much more. At Student Council, we have had two successful fundraisers for our Student Council shirts, as you may see from my left and my right, and for our first field trip to the movies this school year. We have hosted whole school assemblies and successful student versus basketball, students versus staff basketball game where it ended as a tie. They're not good, by the way. But this is not the only reason why I'm standing in front of you all today. We want to tell you a little, we want to tell all of you a little more of what has been happening in our school. Now that you know who I am and what role I play, let me tell you a little bit about our school. Well, Student Council and I have asked students from our school some questions. For example, we have asked one student who has a lot of things going on in his life, we asked one simple question, which was, what do you think about this school? He responded with, this is my place of escape. At home, it is stressful, but when I'm here, it's like all my problems go away. The student also implied that the teachers are so caring when I am feeling blue, they are here for me, and they also, and they are also here when I need them the most. I personally have a similar experience, a similar experience like that. I can relate, I can relate to that, but this isn't about me. Our school is very intriguing and very mysterious, but in a good way. As we said in our last presentation when we were here, the teachers at Springfield Public Day High School are excellent role models for us students. They are extremely good at preparing us for the real world, and they also help us with many other things to get us ready for life after high school. Springfield Public Day High, Springfield Public Day High School is currently still giving certificates and awards to the students who earned it. Also, they are now giving props for the students who come to school every day. Every week of perfect, perfect attendance, it allows those students a ticket. What that ticket does is it makes us eligible to get us rewards. For example, we can get an iPad mini movie tickets, a BMX bike, Beats headsets, and much more. Don't get me started with our Assistant Principal, Mr. Porter, which is currently sitting down over there. He is an amazing principal, he is on top of everything. Every day, you see him checking in during class to make sure that everything is going as smoothly as possible. He makes sure that the teachers are doing what they are supposed to be doing. He also makes sure that the students are also doing well in that class, too. He is an excellent role model for the students at Springfield Public Day High School. I also forgot to mention that he dresses very well, but I don't know what's going on today.
We also like his bow ties.
I would like to conclude how our mornings at our schools begin with a quote of the day. One of the quotes that have been said at Springfield Public Day High School was, "I have learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." And that quote was by Maya Angelou. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Nice job. Okay, Central's back in the house. Strike up the band. Director Dandaran, come, come down and bring up your award-winning band group.
This is about you, this isn't about me.
It wouldn't be without you.
Yep, Director Dandaran, we appreciate it.
So, well, thank you for having us down to celebrate their success as state champions.
Woo!
Couple of public announcements. Mr. Collins, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't respond to your email, we could not get the band's instruments here on time. We have a concert coming up in May, invite you to come and check it out. We have, we have to thank Mr. Central himself, Dr. Tokars. Because five years ago, he goes, Ray, would a marching band be good for this school? And he goes, yeah. And he goes, well, I don't know anything about band, but if it's at the football games, then it makes sense to me. So, we work hard, they, they rehearse year-round through the summer, we get together for band camp, and no, it's not like the movie, two weeks before school starts. And we jam out, and it was the students who decided to compete a few years ago, they wanted to step it up, not just from halftime shows. And so we started competing, and state champions, we're going to have, we're going to have a banner in the gym. But I'd like to turn this over to our drum major, who, we send our leadership to UMass every summer for training on how to lead the band and be good role models. So, all, see, I would give most of the credit to the leaders. So I'd like to introduce Katie Burdick, senior, who's going to talk about that.
Hi, I'm Katie Burdick, as Mr. Dandaran said. I'm a senior at Central, and I have been in the band since my freshman year. First, I want to say thank you to all of my like leadership standing behind me. My section leaders came with me tonight because they are the ones that really helped us push forward this season and make it to that state championship position. So thank you guys for being so wonderful all through this. I joined band my freshman year, and I was very shy, very timid and quiet, and I'm sure all of my friends behind me and my band director can attest that I have really grown so much in just the four years, and I attribute that to the band. I became drum major my sophomore year, and it's, we have a kind of stepping stone process of you start off as a sophomore and then you move up to the final senior position that I am in. And each year, you kind of take on more responsibilities and you start to run the band more and more. My band director, Mr. Dandaran, is a very busy guy. He has been, he has three kids, and so he's spending a lot of time with them. So, as head drum major, I have taken on a lot of different responsibilities. As he said, we do have band camp during the summer, but I also decided to run sectionals throughout the summer when our school is open, where we ran music and started to learn music and memorize music. So that the first day of band camp, we could hit the floor and start to learn the drill that would become our marching band show that we would later perform in October. I can't take all the credit for how much we got done this season. Again, my leadership kept their sections quiet when it seems like it started raining on the field and they all want to go out and play in the rain, but we have to get things done. So, what I've learned most through the marching band is that you can make amazing memories, even in the simplest of times. Next year, I'm not sure where I'm going to college, it may be in Virginia, 500 miles away, but I know that I will hold on to the memories I've made in Springfield and at Central, and especially with the marching band for the rest of my life. My favorite moment in marching band is always after the competitions, especially after championships. We walk back to our buses as a band, and then we get on the buses, and we usually are very tired and very hungry because we are all teenagers. And especially this, this year, we got on our buses and we held up our award-winning, representing Massachusetts State Champions, and just the amount of noise that came from this very tired group of teenagers is amazing and once-in-a-lifetime experience that I'll hold with me for the rest of my life. So thank you again for recognizing us, and it has been an honor to represent not only Central, but the entire city as being state championships.
Great job. We have, no, 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 don't sit down yet. We'd like to have everybody come up and introduce themselves and what instrument that they play. Nice job, Katie.
Say your section and your grade. Your favorite color.
Loud and proud.
Hi, I'm Sydney, and Sydney Granero, and I'm a sophomore at Central, and I am the section leader of the flutes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Angelina Rivera, and I am a senior in the band at school, and I am the section leader for the tuba.
Tuba, okay.
Hi, I'm Natalia Rivera, I'm a junior, and I'm the section leader for the trumpets.
Hi, I'm Samantha Varios, and for the marching band, I was the section leader for color guard, but I play the trombone.
Albert, you're back, Albert, all right.
I'm Albert. During marching band, I play trombone, but I'm euphonium section leader.
Very good.
Hi, my name is Hannah Pelletier, and I'm actually the president of the band.
But what instrument? Hannah, Hannah, what instrument? Hannah, your instrument.
Oh, I play saxophone.
Sax, yeah.
Hi, my name is Zachary Ciano, and I am hoping to be the future section leader for the saxophones after Hannah Pelletier leaves.
Well, we know where he wants to go. Well, we're all very, very proud of you and Central High and the band. I know the superintendent has something for you, too. So, congratulations and continued success.
We have a little certificate from the mayor, school committee, and I, in recognition of Springfield Central. of Springfield Central High School marching band for winning the Division II US Band's state championship on October 28, 2017. President of this thing. So if everyone can come around, we'd like to shake your hand and congratulate you.
Congratulations. Virginia Tech, is that?
Oh, no, William and Mary.
You did a congratulations. Wow, congratulations.
Congratulations.
You got a goal, anyway. Just don't push her down the stairs or anything. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good that you couldn't play.
We've had a lot.
I'm warning you, I thought I said something. You do a great job.
Congratulations.
Four years ago, you came to the gym on Saturday, and you were looking for the IRS system. You took last year. You're the first to championship. You got one point for last year.